Members are present, I call to order the August 3 meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency, and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. Thank you. We would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the Garcia family. Please stand up and come before the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much to the Garcia family. That brings us to Item 1, which is Presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. As is noted on our agenda, we are prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item 1, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. And we do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other items this evening to please fill out a Request to Speak card, which is next to the clerk alongside the wall there. And in front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. We ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We accept the Request to Speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report has been read, the council questions and public testimony have begun. We do not accept any further speaking request on that particular agenda item. If you are addressing a specific agenda item, please turn in your cards as soon as possible and write the item of that agenda item you're wishing to speak on the top, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report for that particular agenda item. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause, or boos, chat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted by the Request to Speak cards and on the podium, and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. And next, so we will ask, are there any requests to speak? Timothy Lee Allen?
Work. Alright. I'm ready. Clock's starting.
Once you start speaking.
Alright. Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am Timothy Lee Allen. I have lived in District 1 most of my life on Sacramento Avenue. I'm here for two reasons. One is to provide a comment for a resident who cannot be present tonight, and to request housing for District 1 and 2. There is one thing that COVID has taught us, is that it is all about Zoom and remote online attendance. Now that in-person meetings have resumed, a large percentage of school board and city council meetings are being held in a hybrid fashion. Yolo County Board of Education has been holding hybrid meetings for some time. Remote attendance benefits persons who are not able to attend due to disability. Remote attendance encourages more public participation. In today's world of COVID and monkeypox, remote participation is per with the course. Maria Gohalvo would like to request that the mayor, as the Presiding Officer, conduct city council meetings with an option for online attendance. Now that we have district elections, districts 1 and 2 need affordable low-income housing. I applied to Bridge District Apartments, but they require that I make over $3,000 a month for a 600 credit score, with parking costing an extra $125 on top of that. These brand-new apartments that they built are 300 square feet apartments, for an income that I would have to make for 3,000, and I'm only getting, so I would have to make 3,000 to apply, and I'm only getting 300 something square feet of room for myself, which is like a little studio. And it's like, I have to make that much for that? Like, come on now. Another thing is Maria Gohalvo is a part of my support system. Thanks to her, I was motivated to run for city council. Maria protected Broderick and Bright from getting split up. Yeah, just, there's no housing. Like I said before, there's plenty of open pieces of land that can get built on. But then again, you know, I have to make $3,000 a month to be able to get a 300-square-foot home for myself. Do you guys live in a 300-square-foot home? I'm assuming not. So, I mean, it would be nice to be able to afford a bigger home, but, you know. Thank you, guys.
I was wondering if we could get any information about the new apartments that are going to be built on Sacramento Avenue? Are they going to be low-income? Can I get a nod or a no?
You can, the staff can follow up with you about that.
I'm sorry.
The staff can follow up with you about that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Is there any movement on the Safeway situation? Will we ever get another store there again? Are we trying to get another store there again?
Staff can also follow up with you.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alfred Melbourne?
Mayor, council members, all the folks here, thanks for allowing me to come here and speak tonight. Good to see you back. Chris, so I'm coming to you guys today on behalf of Three Sisters Gardens. So, Three Sisters Gardens, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that I founded in 2018, supporting the at-potential, high-promised youth in our community of Broderick and Bright. Not specifically, but that's where I know that the greatest need has to be met. Some of you folks have been out to a farms before and seen the importance of what we're doing and what we're growing for the community. Some of you guys here and those listening may not know that Broderick Bright is considered a food desert by the USDA. And that is not a badge of honor, that is not something that we hold with any kind of pride. It's a shame upon us, on our city, on those former city stakeholders that were in place to allow things to have gotten to such a state where we were over-criminalized with gang injunctions and no opportunities for our youth. So, that's something I think that has to be acknowledged and recognized so that we can start creating the change in our community, putting the resources where they need to be, and supporting organizations like ours that are working with the youth. So I just wanted to commend our youth for the work that they're doing in the community as they continue to hold free farm stands and build the soil organic matter so that we can have strong soil to continue to grow food into the future. And we have four farms now that we're working, but we would love to have 50 throughout this whole city, giving us the power. Native indigenous-led nonprofit organization, so that we can continue to be a part of the answer and not just other people coming in helicoptering over us, saving us by day and leaving. So, just a homegrown organization that needs the support from this city council. So, as I mentioned times past, that we're in a global pandemic and also a climate crisis. So, needing to come together as one, I've noticed that, I mean, our city council is still having issues getting along with each other and needing to support one another as we go through these times. It's not a time to be dealing with any type of petty politics. All you guys should be acknowledging each other, supporting each other, embracing each other up as the stakeholders and leaders of our community. And I say that to everybody, even to Dante who's not here. I know that sometimes, you know, people want to see me and think that I might be some type of antagonist or activist, whatever you want to call it. I'm here as a concerned citizen and community member to hope you guys can get the picture and to work together for our greater good. So charity, charity, I noticed some folks, I mean, posting stuff about how charitable we are and we're doing. Well, we're going to be doing things for the next 60 years if we don't change the dynamics of the system and really supporting people in our community, giving them the resources and tools to do for themselves, to do for themselves. So that's one thing that I wanted to point out, that sure, we can be charitable and we can keep doing these things, but if we don't change the whole structure and dynamic of things, we're going to be doing it for the next 60 or 100 years. There needs to be real help building up our communities.
Melba, can you wrap it up?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you guys for hearing me.
Hi, I apologize, I look like crap, I was doing yard work. First, I want to thank, thank you for the opportunity to be able to come here and give comments. I am here representing not only Alfred, the Broderick and Bright Neighborhood Association, along with the whole row here. A gentleman brought up an issue about housing. I don't believe, from what I looked at, I don't believe the housing on Sacramento Avenue is affordable housing. Not a lot of information, but it didn't look like anything that indicated it was. And so, this leads to, there needs to be a policy for housing, for affordable housing. I don't know if there is one. On a glance, I didn't see one. And if there isn't, I strongly encourage that an affordable housing policy be passed. And I have great concerns along the riverfront and developers coming in and taking up that land, and it's not for community, it's not for the community members, it's just for, you know, that group of individuals who bought that land, and that's a fear, and that's a concern. So, that, um, I also wanted to comment on what Alfred, I want to follow up on that. At the beginning, you indicate to be respectful when we're giving comments, and believe me, I've heard enough city council meetings where we all, I probably got frustrated and have said some things, but I also want to extend that to you and follow up with each and every one of you. You are our representatives, and you do need to get along, and if you have divisions, then you're doing none of us any good. So I do truly hope, just piggybacking on what he said, Ed Castarano, who is my softball coach, go Red Devils, we were the champions! Woo! I just want to also address the pool, because now I'm done with maps. I'm done with maps. I'm not going to talk no more about maps. Broderick and Bright has stayed together, and that's what we wanted. Now it's time to build us a pool. Our tribe has donated $10,000 towards Bright Park, and we have told the Parks and Recreation over and over and over to apply for funding, and I'm not sure why they're not applying for funding unless they don't want to build the pool. So I'm going to encourage city council, maybe you should apply for that funding. It is called the Buena Vista Community Fund. We've donated to the Mercy Project, 25,000. We've donated to the K-9 project for the police department, and we want to donate more money to the pool. So taking my resident hat off and putting my chairwoman hat on, there is money that our tribe will pledge towards the pool. Please ask for the money. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm honored for this opportunity to share with you the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program. My name is Duriya Sayed, and I'm an analyst in the Community Relations and Outreach Branch of the Department of Insurance. The California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program is a state-sponsored program created by the legislatures to offer liability insurance to income-eligible, low-to-moderate-income families, good and new drivers in California. This program offers liability insurance for a good driver. So how people qualify for this program? They must have a California driver's license or an AB-60 license. Value of the vehicle must be under 25,000 or less, be at least 16 years old, meet income guidelines, cannot be a bad, cannot have a bad driving record. So it's available for good, new drivers that meet the income guidelines regardless of their immigration status. And so, what the documents needed for this program to apply is valid driver's license or AB-60 license, valid car registration, down payment of 20% of the annual premium, and proof of income. It can be a pay stub, W-2, or even Statement of Benefit Card from CalFresh, Medi-Cal, or other state or county programs. And even if the individual doesn't, cannot provide the proof of income document, they can fill out a self-test form to verify they meet the income guidelines. So how much does it cost to qualify? The premiums depend on the county you live in. So right now, in Sacramento County, if you're a good driver, over 24 years or older, the premium starts from $317, $317 per year. So, I also want to bring it, how do you apply for the programs? You can just go online, milocost@www.milocostauto.com, www.milocostauto.com, and take the eligibility questionnaire. It's only seven questions, or you can also apply directly through a certified agent. Ask questions on the website through the chat available, and it's also available in Spanish chat. And also, or call 866-602-8861 with any questions. I will be happy to send you the email with a rec card, and so we can do that part. And if a person qualifies and if all the forms are stated and the down payment, they could get insured the same day by applying directly with an agent. And I just want to come here and just say that I am your outreach analyst, I am with Department of Insurance, we are so many of you serving. So any insurance need, we would like to serve the community. We have, if you call in, our wait time is like, calling back wait time is only two minutes. And we do have a live chat, so just want to know we are here for any insurance resource or any insurance needs. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And if we can have the staff also get that information, and you can share it in some way publicly, just among, also among staff and the city, that'll be. Maria Garcia?
Hola, buenas tardes. Gracias por la oportunidad de hablar. Otra vez, pidiendo otra vez, por favor, la interpretación a lo que yo estoy hablando. La razón aquí es para hacerle eco a todas esas personas que están sufriendo por la vivienda. Es cierto, le hago eco a Rhonda y Alfred, y también a todas las personas que están sufriendo por la vivienda. Conozco de muchas personas, muchas familias que están ahorita sufriendo por encontrar una vivienda, que esté, que tengan la forma de poder pagar por la vivienda. Por favor, nuestra comunidad está sufriendo mucho por esa razón. No sé qué se podría hacer, pero ustedes están ahí y pueden ayudar a toda nuestra comunidad.
We have no additional speakers. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The council did meet in closed session this evening to discuss the item listed on the agenda, and there were no action items taken. Next, on the agenda is Consent Agenda Items 2 through 6. Are there any requests to remove any agenda items? No, if not, all of the consent agenda.
Second.
Right. Madam Clerk, Mayor Protem Roscoe moved, and Councilmember Alcala seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe?
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
Next on our public hearing agenda is Item 7. Under Economic Development and Housing is a public hearing to consider Resolution 22-39, adopting 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And Mr. Isaiah Alfred, our Community Development Specialist, please proceed with your presentation. We look forward to hearing from you. I just want to say, this is Mr. Alfred's first time being present with us in the room, and we'll welcome your presentation here today.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Isaiah Alfred, and I'm the Community Investment Specialist in the EDH Department. This evening, I'll be presenting information regarding the 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan. Staff request that the council open a public hearing to take any comments, and upon closing the public hearing, staff respectfully request the council to vote to approve Resolution 2022-39, adopting a 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan. As the council may recall, the City of West Sacramento became an entitlement jurisdiction to receive funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in 2016. According to HUD regulations, the city must develop a five-year consolidated plan examining the needs of low-income persons and setting goals for the use of CDBG funding. Each year, the city must develop an annual action plan, which consists of activities and actions to address the priority needs and goals identified by the consolidated plan. No more than 15% of the annual allocation may be spent on public services. HUD announced CDBG allocations for the 2022 program year. The city received an allocation amount of $478,000, and the city anticipates receiving $100,000 worth in program income. The first project identified on the annual action plan is the North Riverwalk Trail Extension Project. Up to $285,241 will be used for the project, and this fulfills Consolidated Plan Goal Number 3, which is to construct infrastructure improvements in low-income neighborhoods. The purpose of this project is to create a safe ADA-compliant pedestrian bicycle connection between two existing portions of the Riverwalk Trail Extension Project. This project was one of the top priorities during the development of the Washington Realized Sustainable Community Strategy Plans, and the project addresses concerns of the residents of the Washington neighborhood. CDBG funded the design for the project in 2016, and during this time, right-of-way services and permitting activities have taken place, and NEPA has been completed. These funds will be primarily used for the purchase of materials and construction, and construction is anticipated to begin in September 2022. The second project is the Washington and Broderick Lighting and Safety Project. Up to $85,571 will be used to support the project. The purpose of this project is to improve pedestrian safety and driver visibility through the Washington and Broderick neighborhoods by replacing and updating street and traffic lights. This project also meets the Consolidated Plan Goal Number 3, because it will benefit low-income residents of Census Track 101.01. The next activity in the annual action plan is the Home Key Supportive Services at 817 West Capitol Ave. In December 2020, the city acquired Railway Inn to serve homelessness through the Home Key Program. The goal of the Home Key Program is to get program participants stabilized and moved into permanent housing, so up to $85,571 will be used to support case management. This activity fulfills the Consolidated Plan Goal Number 1, which addresses the supportive services needs of persons experiencing homelessness. And lastly, general admin and planning will be funded through the annual action plan. Up to $114,095 will be used for program activities such as reporting to HUD, conducting environmental review for CDBG-funded activities and projects, planning activities such as the 2022 Annual Action Plan, and to provide fair housing services for West Sacramento residents. The city is limited to 20% of its annual allocation in any given year, and HUD also awarded an additional $116,588 in CDBG coronavirus fund. $86,588 will be used to support the Home Key Program at 817 West Capitol Ave, and the remaining $30,000 will be used for general admin and planning expenses. A 30-day public comment period was initiated from July 1, 2022, through August 1, 2022, and as of today, staff has not received any public comments. In conclusion, staff request the council to open a public hearing to take any comments, and upon closing the public hearing, staff respectfully request the council to vote to approve Resolution 2022-39, adopting a 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan. Thank you for your time. Raul and I are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Alfred. Bringing it back to council, are there any questions among the council members at this time? No? Alright, I'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests from anyone to speak on this item?
We have received no requests for this item.
No requests? Okay, I'll bring it back and close the public comment, bring it back to council, and, yes, Councilmember Ledesma.
Thank you. So, Isaiah or Ms. Alfred, first of all, welcome to your first presentation at the podium to the city council, and we've been seeing you for quite a while on the Zoom call, so nice to see you in person, but thanks for the work on this. These are important, very important programs that we're programming, the CDBG money, with our money, from Measure E and other sources that we've been able to accrue to help these neighborhoods. So I just want to be, I'm fully supportive of this, and want to make sure that we continue to sort of look for these opportunities to where we can use the federal block grants and couple them with our own measures and funds that we put aside, either through Measure G E N or some of the other funds we have. So, just really good work putting this together. Thank you.
Hi. No. Going to move. Oh, okay. Councilmember Protem Roscoe?
Thank you. Thank you, Isaiah. The, I didn't have a question. I did read the commission recommendation that the two, EDH and the PRIS Commission, they recommended different priorities with respect to alternative projects. I do appreciate those, and especially the issues with climate change. I know that Councilmember Ledesma's been a big champion of efforts to affect climate change and remediate the harms that have already been caused, but also appreciate the recommendation for elderly repair programs. I know at least we have an effort this year that, with Rock the Block, that would potentially address some of those issues, but keep those on the back, you know, as potential priorities. I know that we are addressing homeless population wraparound services with this recommendation. I'm fully supportive and appreciate the presentation.
Okay, I do have some comments. Thank you, Isaiah. I know that CDBG is fully vetted among various stakeholders. It's posted, and also, there is a Yolo County Housing and Homelessness Work Group, and also at the county level, where we report out how we expend our CDBG funding and receive feedback. Over the years, I've been able to see how the city has worked collaboratively with organizations like Legal Services of Northern California, who does housing and homelessness advocacy. And, you know, in the housing element, it has been a priority to address affordable housing, one of the components here, to address affordable housing. And as part of the due diligence that's included here, I'd like to make sure that their involvement, because they have their finger on the pulse on individuals that are anticipating to be evicted or challenged to be able to find, you know, housing, they could be discriminated against. And it's something that in the Race Equality, you know, and Inclusion Work Group that we've seen on a regional basis. And so we just want to make sure that we address discrimination for those individuals who are applying for housing, and that that does not happen as part of our assessment. In addition, we want to make sure that, listening to the community's needs, that we do shore up affordable housing and explore options to achieve that. I'm aware that the city does have, historically, as a result of being challenged legally, an inclusionary housing policy, which 10% of the housing is... which 10% of the housing is required for any housing that is being built, that there is a requirement to build 10% onsite or to contribute to the Housing Trust Fund, which is what is funding our, some of our affordable housing unit, units. And we are, I think, going to have something coming up before us to approve for Gateway Place. And that's going to be building like about 60 units of affordable housing. So, you know, with that, I know that the city has been doing quite a bit of work. And, you know, I appreciate what you've accomplished and your engagement, and I am so grateful that you are doing this work, you know, and, you know, in working for us and, you know, exploring these things and presenting this information to us. It's something I've seen you grow and do very well. This is not your first presentation, as Councilmember Ledesma stated. And as we take a look at our climate action plan, which is being revised since, you know, since we first had it, making sure that we have, you know, sustainability and equity. So The Grid, for example, is one of those organizations that I know has been implementing free solar panels and also educating the individuals in their homes to be able to install and to do that. So as we move forward on efforts to enhance our climate action plan, that we include organizations like The Grid, who are already working in our community to achieve those results when we're looking at building affordable housing as well. And I appreciate, you know, all of our council members who have been champions of our climate action plan over the years. One way, I think, Washington Unified School District has a solar panel field. So that's something that I think we've seen, you know, just being able to, you know, have that including our, you know, parking lot here. And so we, I think we're doing some good work, you know, recently decisions made on that. But, you know, that's an area we still need to continue to grow in here in West Sacramento. So you got a lot to work on. Look forward to seeing more results from this. And with that, I'll.
One quick question, I'm sorry. One quick question. I noticed. Thank you. Under Washington Broderick Lighting and Safety Project, it seems like $85,000 is a really low amount. Where exactly are these streetlights? Because you have Washington and Broderick. So just off the top of your head, if you can remember.
That's a great question. At this time, I don't.
You can get back to me, but.
Yes, can I get back to you on that? Sorry.
Yeah. Thank you.
That, I'll accept the motion to approve this agenda. If there are no other comments.
Okay, so moved.
I'll second.
Right, Councilmember Alcala moved. Councilmember Ledesma second. And Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Protemor Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, this item is approved. Thank you, Mr. Alford.
Thank you.
Next is our administrative function part two, is our council communications from our assignments. Is there, are there any requests?
Just very quick, Mayor. The Yolo Local Agency Formation Commission met, and we unanimously adopted the LAVCO staff recommendation to consolidate the Yolo Fire Districts for greater fiscal and logistical efficiency. The recommendation will now go to the Yolo Supervisors for final consideration and adoption. That is all.
I just have one quick update, which is the Port Commission met earlier this afternoon just in a closed session item for real estate negotiation. There was no action taken.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I'm going to use this time a little differently. And forgive me for I'm a little unscripted tonight. So for 12, nearly 12 years, I've sat at this dais and have reported out on many meetings that I have taken over the years representing the city, whether it's the Yolo County Transportation District or Yolo Habitat Conservancy or many others, and including being here for city council meetings. And frankly, 10 years before that, I sat up in the dais as a member of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. And I say that in respect of, I would do it all over again. That time was well spent, and I'm proud of the work I've done. But I'm here to acknowledge two things. First of all, the obvious, which I think the people in the community, as they watch the campaign season open, I made the decision some time ago that I will not be seeking a fourth term on the city council. 22 years in public service is a long time. And the other part of the acknowledgement is my family and my two daughters, who have not known a year in their life when their dad wasn't at a meeting during the week. And I dedicate a lot of my work to them. I said I wouldn't. Because for me, this, I love this community. I love this city. I love the work that this city has done. And it's always a work in progress. And felt the time was right for me to step aside and let the next generation leaders go forward. And this was very personal and very hard for me personally, because I love the work. I really have loved representing this community on all corners of this community. And I don't want to say goodbye tonight, because it's not goodbye. I will be here for another four or five months that we have. And there's still work that I want to get done. But I thought I owed it to the community, and particularly tonight, I owe it to the staff. Mr. Alford, you represent a lot of, what I love about our city is watching our city staff work hard on behalf of our community. I love working with a lot of you that are here. Some of you I haven't had a chance to work with in person yet. And I just really want to pay tribute to all of you, and you owe, I owe you that respect tonight, that I've enjoyed every minute working. I will enjoy every last four or five months working with you. And I won't be done. I'll still be a resident, and I may show up here and then the chair and pull a card and run overtime and be cut off by the mayor. But, because I want to see the community move forward. But for my own personal reasons, and it's just, it was time for me to call it a day. And again, it doesn't stop me from the work I have ahead of me. So to my family, who will probably regret this decision, because I'll be home a lot more, and to frankly, all my friends, and again, to the staff, thank you for all the work you do. And again, there'll be another time that I want to have going forward that I'll say the proper goodbyes in your last meeting. And I want this to be very maudlin at all. I think I owe it to the community, because I know there's activity out there, and I want to simply acknowledge to them that that's been my decision. And I know I'm not the most public person out on this council in the community that, you know, just not that vocal on the community. But I've been here a long time, and I recognize that. You all deserve to hear it directly from me. So to Aaron, and I'll tell your team, feel free to send them all my best, and there'll be more time for us to get together. And to the community, just thank you to the community. Again, and we'll have another time to say, but I've just been honored and privileged to serve this community, even though some of us have had agreements, disagreements. We always pick ourselves up and find a way to move forward, and I expect that here tonight and going forward as well, even through the campaign season. Because that's what we do here and with that. So just want to say thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity to address that. Let's just get back to business. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ledesma, thank you for letting us know tonight. And, you know, someone who is on a cheerleader, you know, for your work on council, bringing you and making sure you secured a seat, I greatly appreciate all the work you've accomplished here for our city. Just your experience, your knowledge, and your dedication, and, you know, the sacrifice that your family made so that you can represent the community. Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Chris, I want to thank you always for being so professional and such a statesman. Yes, we haven't always agreed, but I have always told everyone that I admire you so much for that. We've also been on commissions together, and there were things I didn't know. And luckily, you know, Chris steered me in the right direction of what we were talking about. So that will be something I know that we're going to miss, someone who's had experience on a lot of different boards. But I'm sure you're going to be very involved in everything in the city still. So thank you for your service, 20 years, it's a long time. Thank you.
Mayor Roscoe?
Well, Chris, I'm not going to say Mitch, because your goodbye is, you know, not today. I will say that I know I speak for not only myself, but many people, staff included, when I say that the city has benefited tremendously from your decision to run and step forward, not only as a planning commissioner, but also as a council member. I don't think people understand what it takes to put yourself out there and expose yourself to a community that is always thankful, and they don't always see eye to eye. It's a tremendous sacrifice. It's a loss of time from your family. But, you know, you've contributed to this community. You've led with integrity and honesty and transparency. The passion that you have for championing such things as VIA, which I don't know would even be in this community were not for you championing it. You know, speaking about climate action and climate change, economic development, championing Measure N so we could have inclusive economic development in the areas of the city where it needs it most, including Brighton-Broderick, The Bar, and IKEA. You know, we don't always have a very long memory when it comes to remembering who it is that put themselves out there working late hours. And at the end of the day, I know I take from you an example of how to lead in spite of all the multiple obligations and commitments that you have to your children, your family, who have sacrificed with every moment that you've spent here with us on a Wednesday night, sometimes until 2:00 in the morning. But I know that as they look at you, they know that Dad stepped forward, and he was brave and courageous, and he did something to leave an indelible mark on a city, a city that is small but mighty. So I commend you. And it has been an absolute honor, and I look forward to the next four or five months that we have here on this dais.
All right. All right. We will move on next to applications for our commissions. We are, we will take up one commission appointment next, at the next meeting. And council calendar.
Good evening. Just one item that is not on your calendar presently, but there is the Farm to Park event that's coming up on August 27th at Brideway Lake Park. It's a fundraiser for West Sacramento. And we'll get some information out to the council if you'd like. That's it for me.
City manager report.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. It's a good thing I wasn't asked to say anything, because I'm not ready to talk about Chris yet. But no, I just want to say thank you for the acknowledgement of staff. I know they've loved working with you all these years. And of course, I'll put myself at the top of that list. But we'll have a lot more to say in due time. But thank you, thank you for that tonight. My manager's report, I was just going to highlight in case councillors didn't see yesterday, yesterday? Tuesday, no, Monday. We had a, it was Monday, right? Our little incident outside. We had a fire hydrant that was run over by a large vehicle and caused a geyser outside City Hall. We were over at the luncheon for the home run graduation, and Councilmember Early actually called me to report it. So within minutes, what I wanted to highlight, this was a really great example of our city team coming into action and working together, four different departments. You had the fire department. I think the fire department was first. It might have been Public Works. It was close. But they were all there within seconds. Police Department blocking the streets, doing traffic control, Public Works, Public Works O and M, and the fire department working together to identify where the shut-off valve was. And then Public Works O and M coming in and mopping up